Okay. Um, I'd like to call the Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission, uh, meeting for November the third, twenty twenty-two to order, please.
Mrs. Anne Stalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Peace Geist?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey Brown?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, if you are ready, I'll go ahead and read the public hearing notice for case number eight thirty-two.
Well, let's go ahead and approve the agenda first, please. Yes, um, the agenda was sent to us, uh, before we begin, I want to make certain that all of the, um, we have a quorum, actually, we have a quorum, uh, we don't have an alternate present, correct? So we have an even number.
Correct.
Okay, um, and the, uh, notifications for this case were, um, properly vetted through the procedures through the, to the public, correct?
Correct, sent out via mail to addresses of five hundred feet and also in the Dayton, Illinois.
Okay, one other thing that I want to ask is with regard to case, well, let's go ahead and go down the agenda then. We, uh, have an agenda, so I need to, uh, have a motion to approve it, please.
So move.
One second.
Yes.
Mrs. Anne Stalter? Mr. Robert Geist?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey Brown? Mrs. Kristen Horton?
Yes.
On the agenda is case number eight thirty-two, and I just want to make certain that everybody present, if any of the members of the board, um, have any kind of conflicts of interest that they need to recuse themselves from this.
No ma'am.
Hearing none, we'll go ahead and hear staff report on case eight thirty-two, please.
Alright, very quickly, I'll read the public hearing notice, um, so originally this hearing was scheduled for October sixth, twenty twenty-two, but was canceled. The purpose of the hearing is so the commission may, excuse me, review and act on an application from Doug Drummond with the approval of the property owner, Cheryl Harry, for approval of a specific site plan application for an industrial subdivision. The proposed site is located within the Beaver Park Industrial Plan Unit Development on the north side of Beaver Park Drive, west of the intersection with Distribution Drive. And then I will move into staff report. Okay, so the applicant in this case, Douglas Drummond, is applying with the consent of the actual property owner, uh, subject to a transaction contingency is very common, um, you know. They've essentially bought it, but they have some contingency based on this approval for it to go forward, anyway. Uh, that person is Cheryl Harry. The applicant is applying for a specific site plan approval for the parcel identified by Green County Recorders as, uh, number B zero three, zero 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 two, zero zero three, three zero zero zero, three zero zero zero. Uh, this parcel is located within an industrial slash commercial plan unit development, uh, P U D I C, which is known as Beaver Park Industrial Park. The applicant will be gauging, will be engaging in an industrial land use, which consists of warehousing and shipping related to online sales. A little bit of context, the applicant has worked closely with staff to modify their original site plan design to accommodate zoning resolution requirements, while also allowing for the needs of the business. This has led to a compromise between staff and the applicant regarding front and rear yard setbacks. So per the P U D I C zoning requirements, the setbacks for this use would follow Article fourteen oh nine, which sets forth front and your rear yard requirements of fifty feet for industrial uses. However, the parcel in question is relatively small and contains some challenging topography, we'll look at that later in the site plan, which necessitated a north-south orientation for the building rather than an east-west orientation. This has led to the need for a minor modification allowance on the parcel, which is being requested along with a specific site plan application. As an aside, I've checked with Dawn, I have an email I can read to her response as well if you'd like, but yes, we can approve both the specific site plan and the minor modification together during the same hearing. Um, the final site plan design shows a rear yard setback of forty-five feet and a front yard setback of forty-three feet. These are both slightly less than what is allowed for in the zoning resolution, again, which requires a fifty-foot setback. However, staff has been through several iterations of the plan with the applicant, uh, it started, it started about twenty feet from the front yard. Um, he wanted a, a long building, so we had him kind of square it off as much as possible. Um, some of the reasons that he can't go fully square are A, the challenging topography, and B, these are kind of, the construction is more of a, like a shell building, it's not custom, so there are limitations to the, you know, length and width that he's able to get based on what trusts, uh, what support structures already exist, I guess is the way I would like to describe that. Um, so, we believe that the proposed site plan is as compliant as possible without necessitating significant investment from the applicant in grading and deforesting the western portion of the parcel. Apart from this irregularity, all other aspects of the proposed site plan are compliant with the zoning resolution and the specific governing resolution which created the P U D I C. So what we do in these specific site plans is we go through the criteria for specific site plan approval, which is outlined in Article seventeen of the Township Zoning Resolution. And what we'll do is we'll just go through each of these, and I'll give you staff's kind of, um, answer to that question of do they, does this site plan meet those criteria? So, the first, um, the specific site plan complies with the purpose and intent of the zoning resolution? Yes, the planned unit, uh, the planned use is consistent with the zoning related resolution apart from the requested minor modification to yard setbacks. Uh, number two, the proposed development carries out the purpose and intent of the land use plan. Yes, the land use plan shows the area in question designated for industrial uses such as warehouses. Number three, the proposed development promotes health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the township. Uh, yes, the proposed site will bring jobs to Beaver Creek Township, promoting the welfare of residents. The land use and site configuration do not threaten health or safety of residents to the best of staff's knowledge and belief. Again, the kind of traffic that it would generate is already consistent with the traffic generated in the industrial park area. So we don't believe that it, you know, adds any kind of significant, uh, risk in that department. So, uh, number four, the specific site plan substantially complies with the substantial conformance requirement of Section seventeen point oh seven-six of this resolution. Yes, it does. Number five, the proposed development has no significant detrimental impact that outweighs the development's benefits to the community. Yes, to our knowledge and belief, it does not have any known detrimental impacts to the community, like we said, we, it brings jobs, increased property tax revenue. Overall, it's a good thing for the community. The propos-, uh, number six, the proposed streets and driveways on the site of the proposed development will be adequate to serve the residents, occupants, or users of the proposed development, and the specific site plan, along with any necessary off-site vehicular circulation improvements, provides adequate vehicular ingress and egress, and will be accessible from current or planned public thoroughfares adequate to carry traffic, which will be imposed upon them by the proposed development. Yes, the proposed parking plan complies with the zoning resolution for the number of spaces, locations, et cetera. In addition, there'll be actually a two entrance exit kind of system, again, we'll see that as we look at the actual site plan. Um, we do not anticipate that it would cause any issues with traffic, or that it would, uh, have any issues with ingress or egress. Uh, eight, the benefits of the proposed development mitigate any burden on public services and facilities, including fire and police protection? Yes, the applicant has worked with our fire inspection team to ensure the building meets all requirements for fire safety, uh, that would be imposed upon it. Um, so we don't believe that it represents any kind of outsized burden, uh, to those services. Um, nine, existing and proposed utility services for residential population densities and non-residential uses are adequate for the project demand during all phases of development and at full completion of development. Yes, uh, the utility provision for Beaver Park P U D is sufficient. Number ten, the proposed development complies with applicable requirements and conditions of Section seventeen point oh five of this resolution. Uh, yes, it does to the best of staff's knowledge. And finally, number eleven, uh, this is the one that we've talked about before, but it states that each individual section or sub-area of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as a functionally independent environment. Um, that's unclear or impossible to determine, as previously discussed, this criterion does not have a clear meaning, and as such should not be considered as an approval criterion at this time. If we were to try and take our best guess at what that means, it means can the site sustain the land use that's being proposed? And the answer in staff's opinion is yes, it's zoned for that, it's, the land use calls for this use. All the utilities which service it are adequate, all these things say that yes, this, if it were better written, it would likely meet this criteria as well. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the specific site plan with the additional approval of a minor modification to allow the rear yard setback to be set at forty-five feet, and allow the front yard setback to be set at forty-three feet. No conditions are suggested by staff at this time, so very quickly, let's get you over to the site plan itself. Uh, and just quickly, I'll go through, we have the application here, we have the property owner affidavit from Cheryl Harry, who is the actual legal owner of the parcel, um, and even some documents that essentially, um, prove that, uh, he sent along as well, um, to show that she has ownership of the property. So here's the site plan. Uh, yeah, so, this is what we're talking about when we're talking about challenging terrain over here on the west side of the parcel. Um, so yeah, it's oriented north here, east, southwest. Um, right now, there is a, what amounts to kind of a, a scrappy forest over there, but on top of that, there is a significant grade, as you can see. You've got about a four-foot, uh, drop over the course of this roughly two-hundred-and-ten feet. Um, that is challenging to try to orient the building the other way, so right now it's north-south. If you were to try to turn it and orient it east-west, they would have to do some pretty significant site grading in that area, not only deforesting the area, but then they'd have to do site grading to level it out to allow the building to sit that way. We thought, considering that they're five and, uh, five and, um, uh, seven feet inside the different front and rear yard setbacks respectively, that, um, that was, you know, like I said, compliant enough in our staff report, that we didn't feel, trying to have them do all that additional work in order to locate the building completely outside the setbacks was a reasonable request. Um, basically, you're looking at, so, the entrance and exit, like I said, we have two points of egress and ingress here. They do, um, have space for handicapped parking space, which is required, they have the required number of parking spaces according to our zoning resolution. Uh, the plan is that their kind of loading garage door is here. So vehicles, and we're talking like smaller box trucks, not like semis or anything like that, UPS trucks, I guess, is the best way I would. Are, would pull in here, they'd park here, unload or load from this garage door, and then exit this area here. So we think the traffic flow is well, well done. Um, there is no pavement on either side of the building, all of the parking and, and vehicular access will be here up front. So, do you have any questions right now about the site plan that you're looking at? I'd be glad to talk about that.
What I don't see, what I typically seen is this overlaid on top of like a overhead satellite view, so I could see what's adjacent to it.
Sure, let's pull that view up real quick.
There's the bank and the daycare center.
That's right, so, let's pull up the, uh, pull up the G I S view here to give you kind of a better.
Right smack dab in the middle.
Just kind of wondering what's adjacent there, that, that it might be infringing on.
Sure, so, uh, where are we at here?
Wondering my way.
Nope, yep.
There we go.
So, this is the parcel here, I'll zoom out a little bit. So you can kind of see, you have day air credit union here, you have the, um, the daycare center here. It will be, you know, separated by the daycare by this dense kind of forest area, which, again, is another reason, I think, that asking them to clear that was maybe not the, you know, ideal move. Um, and it'll be, uh, if we go back here, you'll note that it is twenty feet away, which is actually about double what the minimum side yard setback for industrial areas is, for industrial buildings, rather. It does leave that twenty-foot, um, uh, space on the side, so that emergency vehicles could maybe hit a fire from the side.
I didn't see in anywhere the description if it's there, I apologize. Is there a height for this building?
Um, yeah, I think it's maybe in the application, uh, hold on.
The only concern that would be, or consideration would be the bigger.
Uh, the height interior is sixteen feet, it's on the site plan itself, it's kind of at the bottom, uh, with a roof pitch of four over twelve. Um, so you're talking, I guess.
So we're not putting a skyscraper next to it?
No, 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 it, it would be probably even, even in terms of height with either the, the credit union or the daycare, a single-story building, so, I think.
Those proposed parking lots, or pu- the parking lot, how many, um, uh, slots do you think that that's gonna have?
Looks like there's like four.
So it's four plus an ADA, and that was, we did the calculations together based on the number of employees expecting. It's not a customer-facing business, so it's not like they have customers that visit them, it's just shipments and their employees. Based on the numbers he gave me, like, per shift, this is the minimum number of parking spaces he would be allowed to have, which is four plus the one required by ADA.
So that would principally handle the employees?
Employees, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I'm kind of wondering about, I mean, I would rather see the building move back towards, uh, Dayton, Xenia, because I'm looking at this garage door, this twelve-by-fourteen garage door, I know you say you're gonna have, you know, UPS trucks, but if you have a semi come in there, and that's a loading dock or something, I mean, it's gonna be sticking out in the street.
Right.
If it's backed up to that door to unload.
Right.
You know, I, I don't, because there's never gonna be an entrance off of Dayton, or, um, Dayton, Xenia. I mean, that's my only, you know, if, if they're not gonna have semis, or if it's a rare occasion, but I, I just think if you have a semi come in there, I mean, they're sixty-five foot long.
Sure.
You know, you're gonna be sticking out into the street.
And one, so what's the setback restriction from the front for forty-five people?
It's fifty, but they're, they're at forty-three.
Yeah.
So you want to go even further into it?
Well, I would rather, you know, have a twenty-foot setback on the Dayton, Xenia, and give them more room in the front. And back their building up against Dayton, Xenia Road.
Okay, what's the principle for the setback off of a main road in general, what's the general?
What's the rationale for it? I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just looking at this plan, and I'm thinking, you know, you get a semi in here, it's can't, it can't maneuver in this parking lot, and I'm not saying that they're gonna have a semi.
I don't know.
Fifty-foot setback from the front. Well, and even if it's a semi, even at fifty feet, it can't.
Well, you're not gonna have a fire truck be able to do it either.
But another business.
One, like, one way to think about it, let's say a semi were to come in, um, you could take a, you could take it through what's marked as the exit. I mean, essentially, these are gonna be the same, exit and entrance are gonna function the same.
Right.
You could take it through the exit, park it crosswise across the parking lot up there, which is.
Yeah, but then how do you unload it, you gotta, is there a loading dock there or not?
It's not like a loading dock, it's a garage door, it's, it's not like what you're thinking, like a high bay where they can back it in, no.
Okay, I mean, I, that's just my, just from looking at this thought.
So, I agree, and I'm glad you asked the question about what's the premise for the fifty-foot setback, because if we want to go back further, uh, because you won't hear this out of me very often, but, um, you know, if this, if this move for them is in part because they're going to be closer to the highway and to the airport. I mean, when you think about why they may be making this move, they're also in the water of lead area, right? So I don't know if they're growing and expanding, or if they're moving this way, regardless. If they, if they believe that this is the right move for them, I don't think we're giving them enough growth opportunity, can you believe I just said that? But I want you to know that I think that if it went back, if we, but we set precedence, if we move back now, we're setting precedence for every other one that we do. But I think for them, it's restrictive.
Well, so, a couple things, one, each site plan being individual, there is something to say about, you know, if we allow it, then at least it maybe needs to be a consideration in future cases, but you are not, um, you're not bound by a decision in this case to give that same decision in other cases. And then the other, so we talked about kind of what are the purposes of setbacks, right? We do a couple of things, one, typically, you're looking at some form of utility easement along roadways. So, that is usually the primary reason that you have a setback, is so that it allows for these other public services that would run across the front or back.
Aesthetic is not a consideration.
I mean, that's on the, yeah, it's definitely on the low end of consideration when, when we do, why do we do setbacks? It's mostly about service delivery and safety, so, uh, on the off chance that somebody, you know, if you put it right against the edge of the road, if you have a drunk driver or a driver who has a medical condition or something, they could crash it into the building versus perhaps, you know, forty feet in the grass. Often that impact or slope, right, there's, so there's those reasons, there's public, uh, utility reasons. In the case of this one on Dayton, Xenia, the reason I'm hesitant to push it back is because Dayton, Xenia has the potential to expand into a four-lane road. And I know it looks far, you know, it is, it's, you've got forty feet from the edge of Dayton.
They got eighty-five foot basically to the back of the building from the edge of Dayton.
But if that road expands, you're looking at potentially four lanes, maybe bike paths, may amend the detention, like, the ditches that would have to go on those sides as well, so.
Yeah, I, I guess that's, I mean, if the, the, the builder or the applicant is satisfied with that, uh, you know, I'm just.
So my next question is, they said they're gonna move the forestry, and they've got that, that four-foot drop. Is that four-foot, that four-foot drops across the total one-seventy-two forty-eight, right?
Yeah, it looks like.
Okay, so, technically, they have room to what we see as the left, which I think is the east of this piece of property, right? That they still could tear that out, right?
Left would be the west.
West, okay, but, but I'm, I'm thinking correct, right, just because it's not proposed right now, they could grow into that area.
Absolutely, if.
Which would give them that additional proposed parking to that front.
And that would, you know, at, at the point, if they're at the point where they need to expand the warehouse, then they're probably at the point to better able to afford the kind of, uh, earthwork and deforestation and stuff that would go along with that as well.
Or another building somewhere else.
Or another building somewhere else, but, next door or something, on the other side. Um, okay, so we're not here to solve their problem, they've worked with you, right?
Yes.
They've worked with you, you're happy with them, they're happy with you, and they just need our blessing.
I, yeah, I have a good way to sign up.
More conversation? More thoughts?
I'm, I'm good.
It's a record timing, you can stretch this out a little further if you want me to. I can't get out of the chair. Alright, so, are we ready to entertain a motion?
Well, I would say that you still would want to open the, even though there's no one here, you'd want to open that public portion. I do have a brief statement from the applicant that he would like read since he couldn't be here.
Oh, wonderful, okay. Um, you did say that earlier, didn't you? Okay, so at this time, we've heard from the staff, the applicant is not here. Um, I'd like to go ahead and open the public portion of the meeting, correct? Alright.
Um, so at this time, uh, we don't see any members of the public here, but on the applicant's behalf, I'd like to read this message that he asked me to read here. Uh, this is from Douglas Drummond, the applicant, and he'll be operating the business here. Um, the name of our company is Casey International Motorcycle Supply. We are an internet business that supplies motorcycle parts for motorcycles. We sell on platforms such as eBay, Amazon, and our website, et cetera. We originally were set for the October meeting, which we had to cancel due to issues with the rezoning. We were unfortunately not able to make it to the hearing today, as we have prior business plans and will be out of town this week. Again, he explained to me that this is like a trade show, it's an annual thing, it's, as you know, those are really important, especially if you're trying to, you know, grow your business. Uh, our new building will be used as our warehouse for shipping our products to customers. We have worked hard with Max McConnell on a layout and building design to meet our business needs and to meet the lot requirements. Uh, the lot we are wanting to build on has a tree line with the hillside, which makes for a difficult and challenging site to build on. So we came up with a layout originally, which had a site plan with a building that was a hundred-and-thirty-five by sixty. So a hundred-and-thirty-five this way, for reference, it's currently one-twelve. Which was too large to meet the zoning, uh, to meet the required codes. Now we have revised the plans due to setbacks from the surrounding property lines. We now have a site plan with a building that's one-twelve by seventy, which is smaller than the building that they originally planned. Uh, we are excited to have this opportunity to bring our business to Beaver Creek Township. I grew up in Beaver Creek, Ohio, graduated from Beaver Creek High School, and currently live in Beaver Creek. We also have, uh, children who are currently enrolled at Maine Elementary. We would love to move our business out of the city of Dayton into Beaver Creek as it are, as it is our hometown. Thank you for your time, Doug Drummond. So, thank you.
Um, since there's no one here, I want to ask if there's anybody for the application or against the application, so I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Um, and at this time, maybe the zoning, um, members can start to discuss if, uh, any other questions they might have about the proposal.
I have no questions, I think all my questions have been answered.
And we're certain about this traffic not having any negative impact on the local flow.
Based on my conversations, you're gonna have three to four employee, uh, vehicles, including his own, per day. And a few UPS-sized trucks on, maybe on a daily basis, sometimes not even a daily basis, depending on.
It's not an every fifteen-minute flow in and out, that sort of thing, okay?
You know, there, it's not like they're an Amazon to where they're doing orders all the time, they have brisk business, but, um, even the, you know, the square footage, again, of the warehouse is just under eight thousand square feet, I mean, that ought to give you a, a, a kind of insight into the, the operational, um, uh, velocity of their business, it's, we're not worried about trucks every fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I don't know why you would be concerned about trucks every fifteen minutes. Why would that be a concern?
I don't know.
Cause there's a daycare right next door?
Daycare next door, whether or not the flow is gonna go down past the schools, down this way out to thirty, you know, just talking about stuff like that.
I mean, I've got a neighbor that lives right next door, I mean, he's got a UPS truck driving in every fifteen minutes.
I thought it was worth discussing, just to bring up the point.
It's sure his or his wife, probably his wife doing it.
You know, I'm not saying yea or nay to that, I'm just saying is, if that, if that was the intensity that we would see, did we need to address it in any way? That was my only rationale for asking it.
Your question, but no, I, I don't foresee an issue.
Okay.
Even if they grow the business, I think, you know, they can expand their parking and, and storage area.
Yeah. Thought that, okay, um.
It can grow into the trees.
It can go into the trees, that's right. Anything else? And entertain a motion?
Um, just a quick aside, if you would, please, in your motion, also mention not only the site plan approval, but also the approval of the minor modification to the frame, rear yard setbacks.
Ready to talk?
Well, actually, I love Bob's always the motion guy.
Bob's the motion guy.
I suspect Chris is interested in that.
Make a motion for, uh, approval of case number eight thirty-two, specific site plan application with minor modification for the Beaver Creek Industrial Park.
Uh, maybe as presented?
As presented?
Thank you, thank you. Do we have a second?
One second. I'll second.
Yes.
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 Minutes to go over or not?
I was gonna ask.
We actually do not, we are up to date on minutes, which is nice, um, so, I have no more business for you, uh, but I will make a quick mention, um, we have essentially finished the public comment period of our comprehensive land use plan in terms of the surveys and a lot of public outreach that we've been engaging in. We actually have a bit over two-hundred responses, thanks in large part to Dr. Stalter's, uh, students who went out and did some canvases for us, so thank you again for that. Um, we will be, for the next couple of months, engaged in a lot of the plan writing, you know, taking that data, making, um, you know, pulling out, uh, pieces of information from it, making assumptions, uh, and starting to develop the actual plan part of the comprehensive land use plan. In, in roughly February, March of next year, we will be going for another round of public improvement, and so I'll keep you up to date on that. I, uh, am gonna request that if you guys have the ability and the time that you participate in that, cause that's gonna be looking at, um, basically a draft version of the plan and offering comments on, on that aspect of it, so. I just wanted to keep you informed of what's going on there, um, and, uh, I'll be giving you updates as the, as the, uh, information rolls in, okay?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions or anything for me?
Um, just process, so in case there's someone listening, what happens with this case next, so that others are aware.
Sure, thank you, so, this case, with your recommendation to the trustees, the specific site plan aspect of it will go to them for, uh, consideration and approval or disapproval. The minor modification is not subject to the trustees', um, approval, being a minor mod. So when the case goes to them, it will be, uh, it will still note that a minor modification has been approved by the zoning commission, but they will not be, they will not be asked to reapprove that. They will just ask to be approving the site plan as presented, so, that will likely occur um, in December actually, because there will not be a second meeting in the month of November due to Thanksgiving holiday. So we will be asking the trustees on the fourteenth of November for a hearing date, and it will likely take place on the twelfth of December, is what we're looking at.
And, just a retrospective comment, that we had checked on last time we met, we made the, um, change for this industrial park, and that went to the trustees. And where in the process is that to make certain that we abided by the rules today?
Absolutely, so, that was approved by the trustees in their second meeting in October. Um, it was approved with, uh, some slight changes to the list of uses, um, you know, there was a couple that they wanted to take a closer look at, that's why it was postponed originally. Um, we're talking, I think, a total of maybe seven or eight uses were changed, uh, either from allowed to conditional or conditional to not permitted. Um, but yes, they did approve that rezoning, um, and so that is essentially in effect at this time.
Okay, anything else that we need to cover our bases with on that?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, um, it's now just the new P U D, uh, resolution is in effect in this area.
Okay.
Um, one thing I might mention is last year, I know it was mostly involved with some of the online meetings that we're having, but last year around this time, we did a, like an omnibus approval of all of our previous approvals, kind of a housekeeping thing suggested by Dr. Stalter. Um, as of right now, I am not aware of any business that will be coming before us in December. That could definitely change, I know there's still, you know, plenty going on with the Stonehill Village area. If there is not business, would this board still choose to meet in the first Tuesday, or first Thursday of December to pass a similar resolution?
Was that the first?
Uh, yes, it is December first. It's up to you, just something I, uh, if, otherwise, if we don't have any business, I'm happy to, to not have a meeting if that's what you so choose.
I'm going your way.
What way's that?
Either way.
To, to either meet or not to meet, depending on whether or not they have a case.
Right.
Right.
That's how it normally is.
I think what he's trying to say is, if we, we can opt now to say we do not want to meet.
Good either way.
Good either way.
Alright, Bob, what does that mean?
That just means standard quo.
Okay, you're not going somewhere.
Okay.
Not on the first.
Okay.
It sounds like if there's no business that
Then we're out.
Everyone would be okay with a month off in December, so, I will keep that in mind, if we really wanna do something like that, we can always do it in December for stuff done.
Did we have any electronic or virtual meetings that we needed an ominous coverage? Okay, alright, well, with that, I believe we're ready for, uh, motion to adjourn.
Make motion, everyone go to Pilates, come on, we've got twenty-one minutes, okay, get the gavel, Pilates, there's one space open, do the gavel.
This is still a one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.